We're gonna try to get through the particulars. We do have, and this is gonna be at the council meeting, but Doug Beer. Doug, I'm gonna ask you to just come up. I'm just gonna ask you to come forward just for me.
I'm not too good at prompting, so.
Doug? I'm gonna miss you.
Yeah, I'm missing you too, man.
Brother!
This guy's...
You know, I'm gonna talk to you until the last day that you have to be on here, and I'm gonna try to make this as uncomfortable as possible for you, Doug.
This is bull, Chris.
But what a blessing it has been. I want you to say something tonight, too. But Doug, you were the chief when I got on city council. We've been through some rugged times together. And I remember one day you came and picked me up down at Park Place. Remember?
Absolutely.
And you're just gonna be missed. It seems like, I don't know, you gave us a warning, but...
Yeah. I'll say a little something after the meeting, but just grateful is all I can say, so.
Anybody wanna say anything to our trust in Doug Beer before he says no?
Oh, I don't know if I can. I'm gonna start crying.
Doug Beer, alright, yeah.
That joker, man.
Alright, so anyways, council, you guys have a green light to torture Doug as much as possible until...
Until he's out.
Especially you, John Bills. 'Cause I know you're good. Okay. We have Dennis Kramer, major of operations, 30 years of service, we'll be recognizing that as well. Next, we have a consideration of property locally known as 848 South Garfield Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland.
Show the property on the overhead here. This is a property the city acquired through the abandoned building program. There was a fire at this property on the structure. It was since demolished, and we've had interest from both adjoining property owners to the north and south in acquiring a portion of the lot. There is a garage still remaining on the northern portion of that lot that would go with northern half of that lot. But the property owner to the north has requested, and the property owner to the south requested a portion of the lot. Splits approximately 29.5 feet to the north and 23 feet to the south. Each is offered $500 for that. Per usual process, properties, vacant properties are either sold to adjacent property owners or someone who would have to build a new structure on the lot within 180 days. So currently in the packet, it's structured that it would be split between the two adjacent property owners unless someone else came forward to build a new home.
Counsel?
No questions on mine?
I don't have anything. I just would say in the future, I think we could probably come up with some different ideas or plans to do things with these types of lots, but in this case, I think it's fine.
You put a popcorn. Okay, we're good. Next, this is the time set for hearing for consideration of sale property locally known as 424 North Third Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Publication's been made. Mr. Tisland.
This is the current police building located corner of Third and Columbia Street. We have had, or did list this property, I guess previous council, through a real estate agent, have had an offer on the property. They're here gonna speak as well. Trinity Hospitality Group. Some of the conditions on the property, based on what they're looking to do at the site, would be start demo or rehab within 180 days of deed transaction from the city. Construct a hotel with a minimum of 30 rooms on the site. Rooms shall include any rooms located on the adjacent property as well at 412 North Third. Invest a minimum of $3 million in the total redevelopment site, including 424 and 412. And construction be completed within two years of start of work listed. They would need to lease back the property to the city for a term no longer than August 1st, but 60 days after substantial completion of renovation of the current facility, the former US Bank site. Property transfer completed upon due diligence of the purchaser. And if the purchaser doesn't fulfill requirements of two, does not start demo or rehab within 180 days, that they would transfer back to the city for a dollar. So is it the general conditions of it? And maybe comments or input?
Counsel?
My name's Marty Bowle, and I am...
Are you?
Yes, now or no?
Yes, she's...
Yeah, come up to her.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, you? Yes.
She's getting out easy. Yeah, you gotta talk in the microphone.
Darn it.
Get your name and address, please.
Anyway, my name's Marty Bowle, and my husband and myself bought The Quality Inn here in town two years ago. And recently, our partner Julie Lehman has joined us, and we formed Trinity Hospitality. And it has been our dream to own a boutique hotel downtown. For the last couple of years, we've been talking about that. And it's really come into play now, working with everybody here. And we would love to see it come into play. We've spoken to architects and have gotten some renderings and drawings, kind of, and ideas of going on. And we're just really excited about that opportunity and would love to purchase the police station for a really, really cheap amount so we can knock that thing down and build our dream hotel and make Burlington a better place to visit and welcome people into our town and our community and just restore what it used to be and make it even better. So that is our dream and our hope. And I don't know, Julie, do you wanna say something about that or not?
I just think, I just wanna let you know about our background a little bit, obviously they're hotel owners and have some experience with that. Chad has a lot of business development and entrepreneurship experience. I'm actually formerly a downtown development professional. I was the first Main Street Director in Mount Pleasant. So I'm very familiar and on board with what DPI's been doing and what they will be doing in the future. We're really excited to be a catalyst in the downtown, and so I guess that's... Anything more you'd say?
Thank you. Do you guys have questions for us?
Any questions, just have a statement. First off, I knew that you were a rock star. I could tell by your socks. Secondly, if, I did wanna say this. If you guys get that to go through, I don't, I gave up my public singing, but have you ever heard the song, "Did you ever know that you're my hero?" I'm gonna sing that. I'm gonna sing that for you all. That's right. Not tonight, but if we get this done, I'm gonna sing that. I think that would be awesome. You're not gonna stop me, Jim?
From singing?
Yes.
He's just disconnecting your mic.
Counsel?
Great project. Look forward to seeing it.
How many rooms did you say?
We'd like to shoot a 35.
Okay, awesome.
And put the tweet number that we can make some money, and we feel like that Burlington can absorb, I think, any more than 35 or 40s. In our opinion, too many for Burlington Boutique Hotel. And you also can't give that personal connection you wanna have with your guests in a boutique hotel. We wanna know everybody's name, and we wanna welcome them in differently than we would in a regular chain hotel.
I do have one question. Does your plan...
Have you come back up to the...
Sure.
Does your plan include anything with the building next to it?
Yes, it does. So we plan on purchasing the moose building and then restoring that back to a beautiful, beautiful building and then connecting a building next to it to get those 35 rooms that we're gonna need.
Okay. Thank you.
Fantastic. We're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Alright. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have resolution approving plans and specs for the 2017 Law Enforcement Center Site work improvements. Thank you guys for coming down. Big Chief?
Yeah, just briefly, we're just going back out to the street or going back out to bid on the site work improvement to the back, the parking lot to the back. When we bid that with the original project, we had budgeted $60,000, and I think it came in at 72, so we didn't accept that bid. Thought the spring would be a better time to put that back out. So the plans and specs are the same. Everything's the same. We're just, we didn't accept that bid. We thought it was more than what we could get it for, so we'll see. We'll see what happens with it.
Alright. Questions?
No questions.
Appreciate you not accepting that high bid, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting services on South 14th Street. Mr. Rick Ritter?
Good evening. Here's a request. The request is actually two streetlights after reviewing with the police department. As you can see the map here, there are several different dots. The yellow are existing streetlights. The red are existing poles. My recommendation upon speaking with the police department is to install one streetlight on the north end of where the development is currently at. It is fairly dark in that area. The church puts off quite a bit of light from its building. And then there's a yard light for the farmstead, kind of off to the west and south of the church there. So my recommendation would be install one streetlight.
Nick, do you have any elevation issues with the airport? That being...
I talked to them, there's no issues there. It's use an existing pole, so there's no issue there.
You guys good?
Yes.
Couldn't say? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Next, we have a resolution approving an agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad for easement, support, oversight, and general conditions for working in proximity to Burlington Northern Santa Fe Main Line during work on Mount Pleasant Street Bridge Project.
Yeah, quite a doozy. This is an agreement with BNSF for, one, to do the work there, but it also is packaged in a permanent easement, but also a temporary construction easement. For some reason, there was never a permanent easement over top of the railroad or in their airspace. And so in that package of information, we have a permanent easement, or we're trying to get for a dollar, and then a temporary construction easement that we're trying to get for $1,000 will be in some of their other area. But the other requirements, I've spoken about before, we always need a flagger anytime we're working within a certain proximity of the railroad, but this agreement expands a little bit upon that, where we will now need a construction manager onsite as well for the duration of the project, which, as I spoke before, has a price tag of around We will likely not be the people that write the check strictly to BNSF. It'll probably be a bill that our contractor sees to get the proper permitting and having those costs. We will be paying for them, but just not directly to BNSF. I don't have BNSF's signature yet on this. I was hoping, because of letting dates, I could get counsel to approve this prior to, and then have them approve it, and we can get it on its way to the DOT.
Counsel? I don't like it, but you gotta have it. The flagger, he's costing us $50,000, $1 million, you know, to hold a flag.
You said there's a $1,000 fee for the temporary...
Correct.
...easement. Is that typical?
Correct. We typically take the area, the area affected by construction, and we take that times evaluation based in the neighborhood of what that is. And then we take it and we give, we offer, you know, this is, I would say this is probably pretty typical, what we offer for a construction easement. Sometimes if we work out a deal where we're gonna take care of some grading issues they have, it might be a little less, but this is not out of line.
You guys good?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution approving, hold on, let me make it big. A resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement from a lot off Osborne Street, a pen number 11-32-329-003 for the construction of the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge Project. Mr. Mack?
And the map that Eric threw up is actually, I think, of the wine guard. I think that's the wine guard piece that we need. I might have misspoke before. I had a wrong piece of paper in front of me. I don't have the BNSF easement. It's probably in your packet there. I grabbed the wine guard one. So as you see here, this is the wine guard parcel on the south here. Wine Guard Realty owns that, and so this is a temporary construction easement. And so this is the $1,000. The BNSF one is in your packet, or should be in your easement package. And I will get that information and talk about it next week. Unfortunately, I don't have it with me. So this is very similar to the BNSF one, where we have temporary construction easement to do the bridge. There's some other specifications that we've spoken with the property owner about some conditions about keeping the driveway accessible throughout construction, and we've agreed to that, or at least to put that on our contractor. So this is really no different than the temporary easement that we're gonna get from BNSF. We do have this approved, though, from the person we're purchasing it from.
Good. Counsel?
Good.
Good. Okay. Alright, thank you, sir. Let's move to discussion items. Our first one is a presentation. Indoor Recreation Facility, Greater Burlington Sports Facility. Mr. Hutchinson?
Good to be with you tonight, Jason Hutchinson. I'm your representative this evening for the Greater Burlington Sports Facilities Group, which is an independent board of directors, and some of the others had obligations tonight. So you get me, but I wanted to give you an update tonight on where we're at with the sports facility, provide you with kind of an alternative concept that has come forward, review some assumptions, and then some next steps, and potentially get some feedback from behind you, or from you. But just as a quick update, the plan, as has been published, is two facilities. One, that's a court facility. Chosen location would be the SCC campus. There's a rendering of the feel and flavor. The final building probably won't look exactly like that, but that kinda gives you a flavor for what that facility would look like. Then the other was the turf facility that was slated to go in the Raider precast concrete building out in West Burlington on North Gear Avenue. And so that was the concept. We actually took that concept to bid. We secured a purchase agreement on the site. We took that to bid. We had a number of local companies bid on that, and then we moved forward, selected the contractor, moved forward into design phase. One of the goals that we had in the design phase was some value engineering, because of course, we want to have the best building possible for the least amount of money possible, right? And not that we were skimping on everything, but we wanted to be as efficient as possible. And is there a way to value engineer the project so we could come in underneath the estimates on that project? And so as part of that value engineering process, there was an alternative plan that came forward that the group is fairly excited about. So the alternative concept has been determined as kind of the preferred route, but we have a lot of due diligence to do on that. So what is the alternative concept? What you're seeing right now is an image of a portion of the recplex. So for some orientation, this is Broadway Street that kind of stubs there as you turn into the parking area, and this is the main gate of the recplex. Maidright is over here, and this is Division. So right now, there is, there's a grassy area in between the parking lot and Division Street that is used for overflow parking right now. If any of you've been out there on the weekends, you're familiar with that site very much. And so the alternate proposal that has come forward is for an air-supported structure. So a dome, so to speak, to be constructed in that area. And what you're seeing here are some fire lanes. It would have a hard building that would be used for concessions and restrooms and those sorts of things. But the goal behind the air-supported structure, in the Raider site, we were looking at a plain surface of roughly 40,000 square feet. And we liked that configuration. We were able to do a lot of things with that. This configuration would get us closer to 75,000 to 80,000 square feet of plain surface. In fact, it would be large enough that you could actually have a high school football field in there. Now, with the dome structure, the air-supported structure, we can't get goalposts in there. We'd have to make it far larger to get goalposts in there. So I don't want you to think that we're gonna be playing football with goalposts in there, but that gives you some idea of the size of it. So right now, it's this concept that I'm showing you, and we've not determined the exact size yet, but this gives you a flavor anyway. It's about 335 feet long by 225 feet wide, and so it's a really good size structure. And so you can see just some preliminary drawings in here. You could have one large soccer field, as an example, with goals on each end here. You can also corn that off into some smaller playing surfaces. So you could have eight playing surfaces within that of a certain size. You could have four playing surfaces of another size. And there are all sorts of different sized configurations based upon the tournaments that we might wanna recruit, whether it's, you know, five-on-five or seven-on-seven or those sorts of things. And so one of the attractions of going down this route is that playing surface area, and that's maximizing that is pretty important. You see, there's some room for some seating on here. We may or may not have bleachers on there, and we're still working out the configurations of this. But a very large facility, and we can do this for, it's gonna be a little bit more than we were planning on, but, you know, we're probably talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000 or so more than our other design, which was half the square footage. So to give you some idea on a cost per square foot, we would be driving that rate down pretty substantially. And so again, we've not determined the size, because there are a couple of steps that we need to do yet. But this also shows you an idea, the structure itself would be 67 feet in the air. So that's the side. There would be a small cement wall on one side, a small cement wall on the other side, and then that air-supported structure peeking at 67 feet. So it would be a massive change to the landscape in that area, and anyone coming to the reclex for an activity during the summer will have no, will no doubt see that there's a facility to play sports in during the wintertime as well. So a lot of the assumptions that we have been operating under don't change. So we would still like the nonprofit entity to own the air-supported structure. If this alternative route works out and you are agreeable to it, it's land that the City of Burlington owns in the city limits of West Burlington, our goal would probably be to lease that ground from you and still have the nonprofit entity own the building itself on that leased ground. The turf and court buildings, there would still be two separate facilities as part of one project. So they might not go up simultaneously at the exact same time, but they're still, the plan is still to do both facilities as part of this overall project. And then again, the turf facility, just like the court facility, would be operated from the nonprofit entity. So, you know, of course, you get the wheels turning, and if this were located on the reclex campus, does it make sense to have some consolidated management and things of that nature? Well, I think that's worthy of conversation down the road. It is the intent, we've always intended for this to be privately operated and not necessarily become a city government function. And so that's our preference as a group, is to still have this privately operated. But certainly, especially with being on the reclex campus, we would want really good communication, cooperation, and interactivity with city staff out there, because these two functions, these two venues would have to coexist and I think could cooperate really, really well. We could get some synergies from that. So what's left in kind of the due diligence phase? So we need to determine the exact size. Some of that's gonna depend on the cost. We may want more, but we don't know what we can afford yet, right? We're still in fundraising mode, and every dollar more that it costs is another dollar that we need to raise. And also the market potential. So we're still evaluating the market for this facility. We think, based upon talking to tournament organizers and folks in that space, that this facility is gonna dramatically increase the economic impact. We think that, you know, by doubling the square footage, it will actually bring significantly more economic benefit because of the style of tournaments that we can have and the number of teams that we would be able to have in a single tournament because of that additional playing surface. So it's proposed to be on the overflow parking area. So what do we do about overflow parking? We have to come up with a plan for that, and I wanna commend city staff for quickly responding to this with some concepts to review. And I think Nick's gonna come up in just a bit and talk about a concept that has been tossed around to replace that parking. And then again, this is your ground, so it only happens if you're agreeable to it and we can work on some sort of a lease. And so that's a step that we would have to work through to determine, is this the right thing for the project or not? But that discussion has to start somewhere, and so we're kind of kicking that off tonight. Again, collaboration with the existing management out there. And then, of course, we have to raise the capital necessary. Our overall capital goal is $10 million. Joe O'Brien is with me tonight. He's been kind of our lead fundraiser on that everyday additional calls are being made, and this community is responding very favorably. They're being very generous with their time and their financial commitments to this project. But we aren't at the goal yet, so we have, we've got a little bit of work to do there. Excuse me. So the current request before you is just some initial feedback on this. This is an alternative plan. We're in due diligence. If we, if it doesn't look like this plan's gonna move forward, that's okay. We'll go back to the other plan, but we need to at least do our due diligence and determine some feedback from you on, is this a road worth continuing to pursue, or is this alternative plan not meeting the needs of the community? Future requests, these are unchanged by the way. Every time that the group has been before you, we've said there will probably be a time where we come forward and seek overall financial support for the project, and then also support for the capital improvements fund to that. We don't wanna be in a position where these facilities get built, and there's no plan to replace the depreciation or the assets that deplete over time in that building. And so we have always talked about potentially visiting with you about capturing some of that growth in hotel motel tax that will occur as a result of these facilities for future improvements years down the road. So that's unchanged. We're not before you formally requesting that, but these things I wanna put out there, they've always been a part of the plan. So with that, I guess, maybe, Nick, do you wanna talk a little bit about that alternative parking plan, and then I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Eric, throw this conceptual map up on the overhead here. As you can see, there's two different things, or three different things going on. In the past, we've talked about the extension for the Broadway and the Campbell Drive as a rise grant application.
That was nice, man.
It was all, I can't take credit for that. It was him. I thought it was a nice little place to throw that in there.
That was nice, man.
And that's going over to Mason, right?
That would be Division to West Burlington Avenue.
Division to West Burlington.
Yep. And so that would be a rise grant application. In that conversation, we talked about potentially getting some parking slipped in there, because it's still part of the roadway. As you can see, I don't, I think he's estimated about 43 spots, along with doing some additional work on the east side of our current drive. But the parking that we're talking about is off to the east of what Broadway is now. And this, about 253 estimated spots, and the price tag that Jesse came up with was about $700, $750,000 for that. It's fairly substantial, but it's kind of the realm of what we're talking about for money for a parking lot that size. After talking with Jim, I don't think we have that much money, and that we would probably dial it back. You maybe wanna take over from the money side.
Financially, we don't have any magic pots to come up with, funds to make this happen. We do have one source of funds, though, that is coming up this year that is not a budgeted amount. It's the second half payment for the Manor property. We'll be receiving sometime this year $1.2 million. Now, out of that, we have two different things, and I noted one in later in the council packet, my kind of summary of the budget. An item for downtown parking has been brought up for potentially needing to be able to provide if the sale of the two properties in the downtown area were to go and needing to develop 100-some spots there. Cost estimate for that parking on the BNSF land was...
$650,000.
$650,000. So if you think of $1.2 million, and we could potentially look at two different things that we could make that cover, the 650 for the downtown, and that would leave 550 out here. So as we've talked internally in terms of where, what could we realistically afford to do for something that we don't have identified funding to make happen, we do, this is a source of funding for, in that neighborhood of 550,000. Now, so how do we deal with something that you're presenting at 750?
So the way I think you approach that on this parking lot is you dial it back in the number of spots, and you, I haven't talked to you about this, but make the grass area or the untreated surface around it available for parking, similar to what we have now, where the dome would go, and even to the west, where we put a lane in. I don't know what that number is at the 550,000, but I could get that pretty quick, like. I just wanted to bring you kind of a general concept of what that parking, this kind of parking would look like and kind of the cost parameters that it would be.
And part of what we've also looked at, this isn't our land, so this is something that we still need to work with. What's the formal title? I'm sorry, Jason.
Grow Greater Burlington.
Grow Greater Burlington to acquire the land, and as we don't have additional funding to make this happen, what kind of arrangement was, or potentially, is potentially out there, Jason, to make this kind of thing happen? is potentially out there, Jason, to make this kind of thing happen?
Yeah, so certainly, uh, and I'm wearing two hats, so I'm switching to, uh, the, the economic development hat. You know, we've been very supportive of this project and, and wanna see this project happen. So I don't have authority to come here today and say, that land will be available and it will be available at no cost, but, uh, because our board has not discussed that. But I can tell you that our board is, is supportive and it's certainly a request that we would, we would visit with them. We have visited, you know, about the road and we have a, a, a long history and a partnership of, of ensuring that land is available for infrastructure, uh, out there. And so I would, we would probably maybe adjust the position of this lot. So there are lots of things to consider here. One is you're replacing grass parking with concrete parking. And I think we would all agree that, uh, it would've been great to pave all that parking, uh, years ago, but we never did. And so is now the right time to, to pave that parking? Uh, it could be, there's gonna be a cost associated with that. And then, um, you know, does, i- is that the right spot or is it further south? I think we would, our board would wanna work with, uh, with the city on that to make sure that we have the maximum amount of land available for job creation and development projects, but...
So this is a very fluid topic, I think, is what we're kinda getting at here. We do have some funds that are available to help make some, make a transition happen, but they are limited.
So I've got a plethora of questions. My first one is, um, I know you're in the, the discovery phase still on this. But the biggest question I'm gonna have for you is, you talk about economic impact and a significantly better economic impact with the larger facility. What's that mean? Or what's significant? Is it, is it an expected $150,000 of revenue annually or is it 10? So those are some numbers that I'm gonna, uh, I'd like to see before we were to commit to anything. The next thing is, Nick, as far as the roadway goes, I know the safer grant, uh, if we include the parking will assist in, in getting us some of the spaces we need, but it, would it be better to, uh, to try and maximize that and, and add more parking along the entire roadway in order to take advantage of the leveraged money? And then also, um, uh, Jason, does the parking lot that exists or in this diagram, will that conflict with any future development of that lot? And I know that that's something that the Chamber or Grow Burlington, uh, would like to be able to market. Is there gonna be any conflict there?
With the place, if this were to be the size that everyone were to sign off on of a parking, um, uh, lot, I would probably seek to move that down to this corner and have it located here. That would preserve this corner, this entire corner for development, which, um, I'd like to see. I- if it turns out we need parking all, all this way, well then, then that's what's needed. But if that's the size, I'd probably like to see that shift down. It just maximizes our potential on that large. This is a, uh, a Silgan Containers-esque size of lot, right? Just like across the street. And we wanna preserve as, as much of that as, as possible. Shaving off a corner probably is not going to impact development substantially, um, so...
Plus the fact that you move it south, you could actually have a second entrance at some point in time to alleviate traffic too in front of the, the Recplex though.
So on, in regards to some of the other discussion on the, um, including in the, it's RISE grant, couple of terms, safer. Safer had to do with the funding source for firefighters.
Fire, I, I read the packet, so I didn't know.
Yeah. RISE, uh, immediate opportunity? I'm not, I can't think what RISE stands for, that DOT uses that acronym for. It's, it's, uh...
It's a DOT.
It's DOT, it's for Economic Development Opportunity. This is a prospective one. They have two different pots of money. If you have something such as when we had Silgan Containers come in, we had, we used RISE funding there, uh, for job creation and it was 80% state funding. This is speculative, uh, helping the roadway be improved to, for future development in that area, it's 50% funding. It's still, it's, it's a different level of competition. It's something that we can wait, uh, to, and submit at, on an application cycle where it looks like it can be competitive and, and have a chance to be funded. We talked about additional parking on the road and a couple of things that came up, it's on, the only spot where we really have the ability to have it with RISE funding would be in the portion that, uh, is new road. And we also talked about location versus, uh, proximity to the, um, Recplex. We don't want it to be any farther south than what you see for the spots identified there, uh, around the corner. Uh, we talked about the, whether you'd want it on just the west side as is configured here or the potentially west and east side. And as we talked about, um, having people park on the east side of that new road and now you have people crossing the street the whole length versus, uh, trying to have that controlled more to the main entryway with a, a controlled crossing, uh, we felt a whole lot more comfortable about that. Plus we weren't exactly sure how, uh, how well the state would look at the idea of what would end up being 70-foot, uh, paving area or getting into that neighborhood as we talked about some different configurations. Uh, we, we wanted to make sure that we kept it in a way that was still gonna be competitive for funding with RISE.
Makes sense.
You good, man?
Yeah.
Jim, I've got a question for you. Um, where's the, the money that you're gonna be using for this parking? What, what was the intended purpose of that money? The Manor money?
We don't have, uh, so the, the Manor project was originally funded, uh, with, uh, the debt was with TIF financing. However, as pro, as the, for the repayment, uh, with the sale of land, there's no requirement for where it goes. What I would have otherwise used this towards, um, potentially looking to not have as much borrowed for, say, the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, reducing a TIF project, but this is also a viable source. One of the things with parking, and I've expressed to Jason, when it comes to use, some things that you could potentially use TIF financing for, uh, parking is certainly one that you can use it for. It's not one that I would prefer to if I could have a different source, though. It's, I, so I, I guess, uh, when you talk about identified funding, this is just, this is a piece of funding that is available to do, uh, something with. The funding that we have coming in, uh, if it wasn't used for this, I'd say we'd be using it to reduce our TIF obligation on another project.
I mean, to me, it's all semi-relative just because, I mean, it's based off of whatever the economic or proposed economic benefits gonna be with this project versus the Raider project. And, I mean, if we have to spend money in order to make money, well, that's what we gotta do, but, um, I, I would...
I'd also, I'd also put out...
You have to.
Well, I mean, depending on the, the amount, I mean, it would make sense.
Paving here, uh, as we've talked about, coming up with a need for parking in a different spot. If you put this in, if the, the indoor facility goes there, we, we are in a position where we need to do this at this point. However, this is, I think when I started, Eric, you were already talking at that point about the need to be considering long-term, a different parking solution for what we're doing out there, 'cause the surface out in that parking lot is...
It's a muddy field.
It's a, it's a muddy field and it's get, it's getting compacted and it just can't take that long-term continuing to, to do parking the way we were. Uh, so this was something that was really is, been necessary to consider, getting some additional paved parking out in that area. However, this project has exacerbated the timeline if it were to move forward for getting it done. So it, I, I guess I wanna make sure that, that everybody understands, you've got a project that is pushing, forcing your hand if it were to move forward in terms of what you're doing with parking, but it is not all the needs for this new project that is driving the need to consider parking over time too. Driving, you like that?
Well, and the, the, the other project they mentioned downtown, the, the 650, that's not set in stone that that's happening.
Nope. In fact, uh, I mean, they extended that closing deadline to March, um, but they, everything's looking like they're moving forward with it. They've continued to spend money on, uh, design work on that, um, and they, everything looks like they're planning to close, but they, I mean, they haven't, so...
I mean, I, I look at this project and I say, I mean, every community across the country is working on building or expanding outdoor Recplex facilities because that's one of the major waves that's going on right now. People are joining traveling teams and, and that's bringing a lot of money into communities like ours. And when I look at this project, I say, well, this is us doubling down on trying to maximize the ability of that facility, uh, in order, and eventually it will pay dividends. So, uh, it's one of those things, like I said, if, if we're gonna look at doing it and it requires a, a, a parking lot, well, I need to know what the, the net benefit's gonna be above and beyond what's already planned.
I just think we need also consider though to, um, when you say is in Dublin down, um, how is our, how is our first initial one going? And that's, that's what I'm gonna take into context as well is, uh, how is the outside, how's the outside one going? And is that, is this going to come back and be a, a burden later, you know, on the city? That's a pretty big, that's a big, that's a big building. So, um, I just think, uh, moving forward, we oughta make sure that we've got every, all the information that's, you know, that's, that's possible to have, just because, yeah, once that, once that starts rolling downhill, man, it's, it's rolling downhill. There's, you know, there's no stopping that. So I just think we need to make sure it's the right thing to do, it's the right investment. That's a lot of money we could put somewhere else. I'm just, I'm just saying. Not that I'm against it, I just...
Indoor, I mean, these are gonna be, uh, different, uh, financial, uh, structures for how things are done. The, the outdoor Recplex is solely the city, um, and Eric will cover, uh, how operations have gone. I think I have some written in the, in my notes on this. Eric will address what's, what's gone on with numbers over the course of the last few years during his presentation. And, um, kind of the long and short, we're, we're gonna be putting, we're, we're continuing to put more money into that than what we orig, what we have over the past few years. We were on a trend where we were putting 35,000 to 40,000 annually in for operations. This year we budgeted 70. Uh, this next year, the budget that we're proposing to you, uh, we've allocated 110,000. That might be more than what's necessary, but I'm not sure how much off that is. I wanna make sure that I protected what we need to, to have there. Uh, that being said, you can, the, if you were to look at our hotel motel revenue as, for one, um, well, it's down from what it was two years ago, but you look at it comparatively to other communities our size, we have, we're, we still benefit from this facility, from that facility. Uh, our revenues in the hotel motel sector and the restaurant sector are significantly above what you would see for comparable communities on average. Um, it has a, a huge benefit on our community besides its availability for usage by, uh, local residents, um, along with the tournaments from outside teams. And I think you'll find the same thing occurs with an outdoor, with an indoor facility. And I'm sorry, John, I interrupted you.
No, it's getting off, sorry. Go ahead.
Um, operationally, I mean, the city as the owner of the outdoor Recplex has the responsibility to make operations work. If there's any shortfalls, we're covering it. The arrangements that they, that the, the indoor Recplex committee has in place, the facility itself is covering it. We're, we're not a, a signatory on anything, we're not backing anything. Uh, the local motels have come together and agreed to help set up a side fund to help, uh, cover those long-term operational costs. Not to say that the Chamber or the group isn't gonna be coming to us with this discussion as you see the two other items that were on his request list, one for cash going into it, which I would argue right now, we don't have much funding to, to make happen if we, if these other projects occur, the sources that, I would say that we have some flexible money are gone. But if you take a look at, um, look at the project and what the potential is for growth in hotel motel, I think there's an argument that could be made that it makes sense, if you carve out a base level, uh, is the existing operations of hotel motel collections, um, this goes into place and you have now collections go up 20%. Is there a portion of that that you could say is directly attributable to the newly created indoor Recplex? And I think that, that's a, an argument that can be made and you could say, we're willing to put aside a percentage of that growth specifically towards this facility. Even, but, but that's still an argument that's not saying that we're backing any losses on it. The losses are not the city's. So this is a, a different structure and I just wanna make sure that you understand...
That's why it makes great sense to do it, 'cause our risk is minimalized by the fact it's being owned and operated by a private firm.
So you're still gonna have something to do with that.
But we're gonna, we'll obviously have the cost of a, of a parking lot.
Well, no, I'm saying and upkeep and, and snow removal, all of that stuff. I mean, so, I mean, it's not like we're...
Snow removal is something, is, this is, we're, we have not talked operationally about how this works and we still have to have those discussions occur. Um, one thing that we've mentioned after, uh, the last meeting that we had with, with you, Jason, um, you know, during the winter, we typically don't do snow removal on that lot. Well, that's gonna be something that has to happen and we're gonna have to have a discussion. That's not one of the costs that we typically think of as being ours. So we're gonna be wanting the, this new facility to cover, have that responsibility, some level of discussion about that. And there's gonna be other things that come up. Part of that kinda discussion is also gonna have to be, you have the, an outdoor complex and an indoor complex next to each other. How much crossovers are there and how are we gonna make that kinda stuff happen? That's, that's a discussion that's well down the road.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, it's gonna be something that will be, be there as this proceeds, if you're willing to let this proceed.
Well, a- as a business person that, that had a business that used to be directly affected by the Recplex traffic, I could tell you, I could tell you without looking at the calendar, when there was a tournament in the Recplex, 'cause we were busy without a town traffic. And it, so it goes beyond hotel motel tax. It goes, it, it, it really is a, a great thing for our community. I would say that, yeah, our money, our, our, our bucks in us probably would be a parking lot at this point in time, 'cause we don't have more than that to give. But I could, I definitely think it is something we have to really strongly consider. Uh, it keeps us in the game on, and we've had a little bit of attrition on some of these tournaments. Having an indoor facility when the weather's lousy could be a real advantage. I do think, one of the things that would have to be discussed first is the management of it as far as the combined management with the city in a, in a, and a private facility. I think our staff does an excellent job at the Recplex. However, it has been my experience that typically there's, if we could combine that management, uh, there might be a way to do that cheaper. And, uh, so that might be something we would have to look at and, and discuss that upfront. But I love the project, so...
Jim, just to make sure I understood you correct, did you say that, that we have already looked at or are currently looking at paving portions of that space now, uh, because of the fact that, of the wear and tear that's on the ground?
You've, what, what kinda discussions have you had there?
We had different discussions, especially on the drivelanes, about paving them, uh, that parking area to the, be the northwest of the, uh, by the soccer fields. We've paved an entry drive into that and the driveway needs to be extended and this is another area that is a higher traffic use, that, that's kinda the minimum standard is at least the driveline, similar to the Bees Stadium, uh, trying to accomplish that.
So, yes, we have looked at different things that were gonna require us to spend some money for parking.
So, so I mean, whether we did, I mean, I'm not saying we're doing it right now, but at some point in time, we were gonna spend some money on these types of projects anyways.
Maybe not to the extent that this is.
Right.
You guys good? I know nobody's good, but are you guys, are you ready to move forward then?
I'm excited about this project as a, an end user. I have boys that live, breathe, eat, sports. We have driven thousands of miles to other facilities because we don't have what we need here in Burlington. Lots of dollars going out the window by a lot of teams not being able to find what they need here and that's hotel dollars and food dollars and gasoline dollars and you can keep, you know, checking the, the dollar signs, but this is a good thing for Burlington, a great thing for our community and I am super psyched about it myself.
Wow, she's super psyched. You know, O'Brien, look, O'Brien just actually smiled the whole time he's been sitting there. He's been stone-faced the whole time and he finally cracked his smile. All right.
Well, I know the, I know we do need more parking there just because of everyone's always parking on, um, you know, that soft, soft part. I would rather see it go towards offsetting costs on another, uh, project, but that being said, that is something that we've, we need there, not even for an indoor sports complex, but for our current, um, our current Recplex. And I think, I wonder how many people are discouraged by the lack of parking and things like that when it comes to that area and that facility and that, you know, who knows? I don't know, but at least to keep from tearing up the ground and... But at least to keep from tearing up the ground and some sort of parking, whether it's a fully paved or something like the Bees have, because that seems to, I don't know anything about their parking lot, but that seems to work out nicely.
And that's something that, as we've had discussions on the Bees doesn't see the type of use that parts of ours does as consistently as ours does. So some of that discussion is where, how much can you get by with doing that? Could you do a portion of a lot that is fully paved and a portion that is just the lanes to try to expand the amount of parking that's available and yet keep it within a budget?
It's two different seasons, though. I mean, the Bees are obviously typically playing during the summer months when it's drier and in the winter, it's going to be nothing but soggy wet field that's just going to get torn up as a result of traffic. So I don't know that that scenario is necessarily applicable in this, with this project. But like I said, I do like the project. I think it is doubling down. If we see a decrease in the number, in the amount of traffic at our facility, I think that's a result of other communities building outdoor Reclexes and other baseball teams and parents having alternative places to go. And that's the correlation for me. And this is basically us doubling down and saying, we're going to bring that activity back to Burlington because there's not very many facilities that I'm aware of in our area that have an indoor space, so.
Well, the thing I like about it is if you're talking, at some point in time, you're going to have to put parking in anyway. This solves a connection need, this solves a parking need, and you're doing something with the facility that might bring in some revenue. Whereas before, if we were just going to pave the parking where everybody's parking now for a safety reason, you're not doing any of those things. So in that regard, I see where that's a win all the way around there, so.
I just want to say I'm a little nervous. I think you know that about the indoor. Not saying that I'm not for it, but I am, personally, I'm nervous moving forward. I'll just leave it at that. I'm not going to say much more because I think O'Brien will start giving me looks, man. But I just think we need to make sure we think everything through. But it's good to see that we're still trying to move forward, man. Let's keep doing it. So eighteen, bro. Any other questions for Jason?
Thank you.
What's your expected start? Do you guys have a rough start date for this project?
Well, every day that passes is a day that we're not recruiting teams to spend money here, right? And so, you know, our group has, so obviously, there's lots of due diligence and we've got a lot of things to figure out, but I do not want to miss another winter sports season.
Okay.
Right? And so there is substantial urgency. So our goal in coming to you tonight is to at least brief you on kind of what's happening. If you all said this is the worst idea ever, then we probably wouldn't continue it. I'm not hearing that. And so I think what that means is a lot of the questions that you have raised, it's time to start ironing out some of those details and then come back to you and really move this forward. And so I think what I'm hearing is that there's at least enough interest for us to continue to pursue this alternative plan and then just make a determination for the community, is it the right thing to do or not? And we've not gotten feedback from the public yet because we're just starting down that road, so.
I also like the fact that it preserves the other building from maybe development down the road for a manufacturer of some sort, so that's good.
You guys good?
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next time you come, leave O'Brien at home, man. He's got a really mean face. But we love you, though. We love you, Joe. All right. Discussion item number two. Does anybody have any, let's see, we have a low-rent housing committee appointment. Anybody have any problems with that?
No.
Good, because she's going to be good. That's right. Thank you, Mr. Ranker. Okay, discussion item number three.
Part of that is the city council appointments following elections. Some of those are positions that go with mayor and then mayor pro temp position, so they are automatically filled. But the other ones on that list, that's page ninety of your packet.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Need people to volunteer to take them if you want to work your way down that list.
Yeah. Okay. Convention and Visitors Bureau, that was held by Bob Fleming.
I did.
Can we hear what the dates are?
It's right there.
Third, yeah, I'm sorry, should have went ahead and did that. But that's the third Tuesday at seven thirty AM. No, yeah, third Tuesday at seven thirty AM.
I can't.
Make that a little bit louder, bigger. So John Billups?
Sure.
Okay, Downtown Partners?
I'll do that one.
Okay. Annie Stokely, let's see. Southeastern.
Annie, were you going to stay on solid waste?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
You've got some other ones. I was just going to go through and get the...
Do you want to get rid of economic development?
Um, no.
Okay. Get rid of this, maybe not the right thing.
Do you want to get rid of?
Do you still want to stay on that board?
No, I'm going to.
Okay, you got to get rid of. Okay, man, this is going to be a good year. All right, Southeast Iowa Homeless Coordinating Board? That was Davidson's. That's every third Friday, every other third Friday. Anybody?
What?
Which one? Southeast Iowa Homeless Coordinating Board?
You skipped.
What did I skip, bro?
You stopped at economic development. I'm on the regional planning. I took that back in November.
I could take the alternate on that.
Okay. It's good with me. And so then we would be at renewable.
Well, resource enhancement, that's already covered. Where are you at?
Well, you're, I see, you're skipping ahead. Sorry, my fault.
Okay, we still on the same page?
Yeah, now you're okay.
Okay. I'm not okay, but anyways, thanks, man. All right, so Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Board, that's every fourth Thursday at twelve PM.
That's me.
Regional Plan?
I'm Regional Planning. I took that from Jim.
You already have that one?
I've got that one. And Matt's going to do the alternate on it. He just volunteered. So then where do you?
Southeast, okay, Southeast Iowa Homeless Coordinating.
There we go.
All right. So Southeast Iowa Homeless Coordinating Board, that was Jim Davidson's. It's every third Friday, it's every other third Friday. Anybody interested in that, two o'clock?
I would be, but the time doesn't work for me.
There's that one and there's also a cap one. They've been, and that's every third Tuesday at eleven for Southeast Iowa Community Action.
That's to be determined, and I'm, I need to find out how much that board is meeting. Let's come back to that one.
I could take the Burlington Bees if that's where you're headed next.
I might fight you for that one.
Okay, let's do...
I'll be alternate then.
Let's do the Burlington Bees Association. Let's go ahead and get after that one. That's every last Friday at twelve PM at the Bees Park. And who's?
I can do that and then I'll do one of the alternate.
You're good? Okay.
I'll check into the Homeless Coordinating Board.
I can do that one.
I'm not sure, but, oh, you can.
I can do it, yeah. It's Community Action, and they've been asking me to...
I don't think they meet regularly, so it's not going to be a...
The health insurance.
It's not going to be a super demanding one. Okay, Cobbco?
So Cobbco, for those who don't know what Cobbco is, county...
City, county.
City, county, health insurance.
I can do that.
It's a coordinating board that oversees that, has representative from both entities, it has representation from both the city and the county as well as an other, one person from one employee group member and one representative from the other entities in the county or region that are part of it.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, so Ranker, you're good for Cobbco?
It only makes sense. It's my line of business.
As soon as I thought about that, I was like, yeah.
Bless you.
Descom Control?
What's that? Descom Control?
It's the emergency control center.
Okay, that's what I thought it was. It depends, it says to be decided. I would be willing to serve there, but it's going to depend on when they do the meeting.
They meet about twice if ran about two or three times a year.
Oh, okay.
I can do the Greater Burlington Sports Commission.
I could do that one. That one's fun.
You'd like the Sports Commission? Let's put peanut butter popcorn on Sports Commission. So, okay, did we address and we took care of the homeless coordinating?
Who is that? Who is that?
Lynnam said she would do that.
So we're good?
Yep.
We've got Ranker on Cobbco. That's going to be fun. I want to sit through one of those meetings. Okay.
We'll be taking.
All right. Okay, discussion item number three, we'll turn that over to James.
And see how long I can talk and bore y'all to death.
It won't take long for the boredom part, but go ahead, James. Please continue.
My kids will agree with that. So will my wife.
Well, is O'Brien still here? Nervous.
So in your packet, you do have a lot of background information. For this part, we just kind of do some of the background pieces that help to set the overall structure of the budget. The departments will go into their individual line items over the course of the next few weeks. But just like in your packet, page ninety-three has fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget presentation overview. This is something that we put in each year, a list of some of the goals of the budget and then some of the factors that have impacted us over the last year and items to consider as we do this specific year's budget. So a lot of the information is very comparable from year to year in here. But just going over, goals of the budget, some of these are just what I think of as being important. Timely communication of issues and affair in open manner, trying to balance needs of all community members, ensure that we're in compliance with requirements imposed on us from a state and federal level, ensure that we honor all contracts and agreements that we've previously agreed to, only have deficit account balances occur in projects that are not complete with a plan for eliminating them at project completion. We've been working since, well, since two thousand and twelve, we established a goal to get to the fifteen percent general fund balance as well as some identified targets for fund balances and other funds. And we're getting close to that. We're at fourteen point five percent at the end of fiscal year seventeen. We're projected to be at fourteen point seven at fiscal year, end of fiscal year nineteen. Maintain our core services, ensure that employees receive adequate training and that they have appropriate equipment for their safety, that we make sure that we don't not replace equipment in a manner that ends up leading to higher repair costs than what we would, than what makes cost effective sense. Bring on new capital projects funded by debt service in a manner that allows debt issues to be paid for in a consistent manner and ensure that annual usage of debt falls within a planned ladder of issues as part of our financial policies that keeps us from violating our usage of our debt capacity or threatens our ability to issue future debt or places our debt levy at too high of a property tax level. The budget that's being presented is based on a debt service levy of three dollars and eighty-four cents, which it's been at for the last four or five years, with a long-term goal to see an average new debt issuance funded by property taxes. About one and a half to two million of debt taken on out of that general fund or out of that property tax levy, which should be able to be done with a three-dollar property tax asking. If we've been at three eighty-four over the course of the last five years, we're going to be at that level for at least the next five. And for backdrop, the debt issue that was done in fiscal year eleven was backloaded. It created a debt structure that meant that we had to stay at a higher debt levy to take on any projects at that point. We refinanced an awful lot of debt at that point, increased our levy to three eighty-four that gave us the capacity to pay for that, to get rid of a lot of the deficit accounts that we had, as well as create the room and flexibility to bring on new debt in a more of a ladder formation. So as debt goes off the books, we issue new debt. As we get to that fiscal twenty-three, we can begin to look at that process of transitioning the debt levy down. So those are some, just some basic goals that we have, changes since the last budget was approved. Well, part of it, within the police department, we budgeted for two new positions to come on. Over the last couple of years, the budget before, we budgeted for one new position to come on and leveraged that to get funding for a second officer. That funding that we had that helped to fund then those two positions will terminate partway through this next fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen that our budget is for. So it'll help to pay for those two positions in the next year, but we're going to have some issues moving forward with that. We did bring on the two new officers with a property tax increase in the current year's budget. Doug will talk a lot about how that goes, is working within their department, but they're just in the process of being able to start to hit the streets on their own here in the next month or so.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, two of the three just got assigned to solo patrol this week, and then we got one that just graduated from the academy, one of the two additional. So of those three positions, they speak, and two of those will be on the streets, or as a matter of fact, as I speak, so, yeah. But we got one that's probably four months out, yeah.
But you're seeing the impact of that just now, starting to impact how your force can operate, how you divide up the duties and be able to provide a little bit of relief to you and as well as some additional protection.
Yeah, that, and I'll go over this in great detail, but actually, January fifteenth, we'll be able to reassign a detective, and that was a big goal for FY eighteen, to make sure we could get another detective back up there that we used to have four, so we'll have that back. But over the weekend report, I was just reading that from Sergeant Zahn, and they had six officers, two pop officers, and two reserves. And I'm like, really? We had eleven cops sitting in the streets? This is fantastic. I never even imagined in my wildest dreams that we could do that. So it's going to have a major impact on what we're doing. And like I said, I'll go over this in great detail in our operations, but it was really good to see.
Thanks, chief.
Under the next bullet point, just talking about the fire department, and I think that this will take some discussion as we move forward too with Matt's presentation. You know, bringing on the six additional positions with a safer grant funding, three-year cycle for funds, and it starts to stair-step out just a little bit, in fiscal year twenty, we see a little bit of not the same level of funding as what we have for nineteen. When we get to fiscal year twenty-two, that funding's gone. Now, what are we going to have? It's not necessarily part of this year's discussion on the budget, but it does need to be some context for as we move forward with those positions, how are we addressing those six new positions? Are we looking to maintain all six? Are we looking to maintain three? Are we looking to go back to what our staffing was prior to the safer grant being in place? Or some other mixture in there? If you notice, I tried to put some background in there in regards to our relationship with the CTAA, whatever that stands for, Consolidated Township Ambulance Association? For our service for the majority of the county, cities, and townships. We have an agreement for how we split funding on that between the ambulance purchases and their percentage of staffing.
Can you give me that again, Jim?
No. I cannot give you that.
By township, what?
Ambulance Association. Is that right?
I'm confused on the first C myself. Might be city.
I think it's city township, because it includes cities as well as townships. We currently now, within that funding formula, talk about the net expense after all the ambulance revenue is accounted for. We have some of the administrative positions, a percentage of their pay that goes towards it, and I think that the levels there are fairly appropriate. The staffing that we have for operating the ambulance service may need some discussion as we move forward. And we brought this up, at least with the CTAA membership, when we had our annual meeting with them a couple of months ago. The nature of what our service has been and the staffing it takes to make that... The nature of what our service has been and the staffing it takes to make that ambulance service work has changed over time. The number of calls that, that are going on there, you're seeing, I think, Chief, about a ten percent annual increase over the last three, two to three years. But since I've been here, I think it was in the thirty-eight-hundred range for annual calls for service, and now you're more in the forty-nine-hundred?
Fifty-two oh one.
Fifty-two oh one. So, if you think about that, almost all of those calls are ambulance calls. A change in those calls in the last six years. It, the, the level of staffing it takes is not, to, to maintain an ambulance force for this area is more than having four people per shift or two ambulance crews. We're operating very frequently a third ambulance crew. And as you look at what we're trying to do staffing-wise, having a, an ambulance stationed either at the West Burlington Fire Department or out at our Public Works facility in the evenings, it's reflecting the, the need to try to have a third tiered ambulance as part of our arrangement. And I think that that's something that's up for, that needs to be up for discussion as we move forward. As the safer grant funding goes off, if we're gonna maintain that level of service or in that neighborhood, we're, we're gonna need some participation from the CTAA that reflects the actual costs of operating the, the full ambulance service. But it needs to be, as, as we have those discussions, I think it, it means that we need to make sure that everybody's looking at it from that perspective. What is the true cost of operating an ambulance service, and are we adequately and appropriately putting the right personnel in the right spots? So, that's something that we need to work through as we move forward. I don't know how much Chief will, I'd talk about that or address that during his presentation, but it's, this isn't, and again, this isn't necessarily what this year's budget is about, but as we move forward, it is certainly part of the context of how do we long-term make this staffing work. Next point in there, revenue streams that have seen some reductions. I think I hit on that a couple of different times, but hotel motel tax capped at nine ninety, nine hundred ninety thousand? In fiscal sixteen, we were down at eight seventy or somewhere in that neighborhood. And, and seventeen, we're on pace right through the first, we only have four payments a year. We've only gotten one of those payments so far for this year. We're about twelve percent below last year over year, which is what we've used as a basis for our budget projections. I think I put that then at seven seventy, maybe, in this next year or seven, for what that base level is for the current year and then moving forward into the next year. And I think that should be kind of the floor as we stabilize after the transition out of what was going on with the construction south of here. We see that same type of loss of funding in the local option sales tax collections. First three months, or first three quarters, calendar quarters of the calendar year two thousand seventeen, local option sales tax were five percent below the, the year, the previous year. I don't know how that works through this full funding year, this full cycle in this year, but I do know that our revenues in fiscal eighteen are gonna be four hundred thousand lower than what they were in fiscal seventeen. And we've kind of budgeted for that level to be the kind of onward trend as, as the base for what the future years are. But if you think about what that means to, from a year and a half ago, when we were looking at what our funding was, we're about five to six hundred thousand annually less than what we were a couple of years ago. The projects that were theoretically possible to talk about doing, that the rec, recplex or whether that's indoor or outdoor, could theoretically do, the funding that we have available for the equipment replacement there, for, at the golf course, within the parks, within forestry, we use that to fund our police, fire, think thought process with the local option sales tax. Half of that goes to property tax reduction. We use that to offset what we would otherwise be able to levy out of, for employee benefits. The remainder of that, we fund a fifth of our patrol division, police patrol division out of there, and all of their replacement equipment.
Do we do the firemen's replacement equipment out of that?
Fire department's replacement equipment outside of the pumper trucks has come out of that fund. So, they, all the ambulances, our portion of ambulances comes out of there, all of their other equipment comes out of there. And we'll have some of, we've had some other projects that we've been able to do out of there. The depot, as an example, is being funded out of there. We have less ability to fund some of those things. As Eric was working with Downtown Partners on a future facade grant for, we'd, we'd had that earmarked as something that we could do in, in fiscal, I think last year we had it in fiscal nineteen's budget. We were looking to move that back to fiscal twenty. It's not in it. We, we just had to, to eliminate that out of the, the budget. We, what you're gonna have presented is something that we can look to realistically fund over the next five years in our, in our CIP plan. It's gonna be a lot less than what was in, in last year's, and yet you're still gonna see quite a bit that's being done. You got a lot of equipment. You've got some trails that are still being done. Nick's side, as he gets to the, the street work, the majority of those things are, are still able to be done that were otherwise contemplated. But we do have, even his department, with the budget he presented, I made him cut about six hundred thousand out. Some of those were energy efficiency projects that were funded out of lost. The majority of them were out of road use tax that we just didn't have the funding available to cover. And he can kind of address what, well, I don't know how much you're gonna address that when you get to your budget. You're, you'll talk about the projects that you are able to get done.
Is he, is Nick gonna, Nick's also gonna cover the stuff that, that we had and planned to get done and that we're not?
Well, I mean, to some extent, we can talk about, I mean, the, some of the things, I mean, Eric, you've gotten so many things that have been cut out of this. I, I don't know that it's really who's getting too far into the details of what we're not able to do. Last year, I think I had a list of, that I included just at the bottom of things that we would've, that were cut out just due to lack of funding, and we can do it again. We tried, what we've tried to do is present the ones that are of most importance out of the funding that's available. And the departments themselves, as I went to them and said what we didn't have for funds, what we couldn't cover, I let them make the cuts. Now, in some of those areas, I said what I was just gonna cut, just, just to try to cut out some interdepartmental issues going on. I'd rather not have fighting going on between departments for limited funds. And actually, when it comes to local option sales tax and how things were done, I don't think I cut anything capital out of either police or fire, just from the nature of what I think of being important for emergency services. And one of the things I didn't want Eric to do, when he's looking at what he needed to cut, don't cut too much equipment that puts you into a spot where you're now not able to operate the way you need to on a long-term basis. He did cut some equipment, but, and hopefully, it doesn't come back to cause problems. But we're trying to be cognizant of the fact that if you cut too much out of the equipment side, all you do is you, you, you create a long-term problem that you can't, that gets really difficult to overcome. I did mention the Apollo site. Do know, depending on what happens with that site, we took that over originally with the thought, thought process that we had, we're gonna take on the responsibility for demo if we didn't do anything else with it. That still sits out there as a potential liability. We're hope, very hopeful that what's gone, going on there is able to be successful, but, you know, this may be that we're, we're still sitting as a backdrop for that, and we had a, I think, an, an estimate that wasn't high enough on, on demo on that, based on what we've seen on other things. I-
An estimate that wasn't high enough?
Wasn't high enough.
It was high enough, all right.
We had it six or seven hundred thousand, and I, I'll be happy if we end up being able to get it done at that price.
Oh, I'd be happy if we could get her done for-
So, just know that that's something that sits out there, and when we talked about it, that was something that we had looked at using TIF funds to, to make that project happen, and it's something that we still have the ability to fit in if we need, but it may, depending on what goes on, that may be something that's, that creates a reprioritization of projects in the future that, that we're funding. A reminder on the downtown project, we mentioned it already earlier, the need potentially to meet a, a parking lot need. Now, we do have a source of funds with the second half payment from the manor site to cover. That's right now where we're at. If, if, if that were to say this project doesn't happen at this current timeframe, and we use that money from the manor sale to offset debt on something else, and now you have a parking issue come up a year from now, it's a different conversation that, to be able to have with that. Timing means an awful lot. We do have the timing to have some flexibility for discussions at this point. But we've got those worked out, at least as, in terms of, we're building that into what our CIP is, that we can address these needs if and when they do, do come up right now. Again, a year from now, we hit a different cycle, and it, we may be having a different conversation.
It's always something with you, James.
I mentioned the G was talking about the indoor recplex while we had the presentation, so that's one that we have that's sitting there. Auditorium, you know, as, as we switch from one contract to another, our relationship will be different with AMF than it was with VenueWorks. We don't know what the, the net is gonna be. We do have it budgeted as a net being pretty comparable to what the net was with VenueWorks. Our cost with VenueWorks over the last couple of years was in the three hundred and ninety to four hundred and fifteen thousand overall net cost to operate the, the auditorium, and we have it budgeted in here for this next year, I think, not- Right, not three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, maybe, for net cost to operate. It's, it's in the same, same ballpark. But the, when it comes to the way that relationship is, it's a, it's a much different relationship. We, we made VenueWorks whole with the operation of their facility, with, of the, of our facility. AMF, we're given a fixed amount to, and then we'll have some splits on revenue, but if they operationally aren't able to meet their targets, that's on them. So, there's a different risk factor for AMF in the arrangement than there was, that, what there is for us. We also aren't gonna be incorporating, because of the nature of the different structures, with VenueWorks, their operation for their unit down here at the auditorium, we incorporate all their revenues and expenditures into our books. We will not do that with AMF. We will show the expenditure of cutting a check to AMF, but they will be running their operations on their own. So, it, it changes what our revenues and expenditures look like on our books. Greer's Restaurant, with the whiteboxing of that, the council had approved putting up to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars towards the whiteboxing efforts last year out of the economic development portion of the local option sales tax. We've spent some of that money as we put in a sewer lateral across as part of another project. But the, the remainder of our funds will be covered by Nick in his budget presentation, I think, along with the seventy-five thousand we received from the Main Street Challenge Grant to, to whitebox off that space. It still doesn't allow us to do everything that, that everyone, I think, would like to do. Well, Nick is right now in the process of trying to get some quotes for architecturals and, and construction services for that project, so that we can go about getting documents put together that li, list outbid items. That's something that we're able to expand off of what was otherwise gonna not get, I don't know, I've rambled, I, I'm, everything I'm doing is rambling, but with this, we're doing more than what we would of it with just our funding, but we're still not gonna get as much done as what everybody would like to see get done, I guess, is the long and short of it.
With Greer's or with the, with the depot?
Depot, primarily for the Greer's Restaurant space, but this also, the way this is done, you're gonna get the floor done outside.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Well, and the reason why it's taken so long is one, is why we went out for an HR, HRDP grant, and so that had a timeframe to sit and wait, and we had a challenge grant. So, if you start construction prior to whether or not, not you're getting the grant funding, you put that, you put that grant funding at risk. And so, we've kind of waited for these grants to be available, and so that's kind of the timeframe. Now, with this grant, the, the challenge grant, there were, with the funding levels that we had, there was gonna be some obligation from Matt put on him to be able to take care of some of the stuff that we couldn't consider, couldn't get done with the hundred and twenty. I think it was like a hundred and fifty thousand that I had projected that that estimate would be, and the funding levels were at a hundred and twenty, and that hadn't taken into consideration design costs yet, and so those have to be factored in as well. So, I think we're gonna be able to get a lot more done than what we had initially intended, but it's still gonna be tight. You're still working with a finite budget on this project.
When, when do you expect to be done with that project?
Well-
On our end?
On our end, I would say you probably could see construction sometime starting in May. So, sometime in the fall. Interior renovations is always-
Right.
Interesting, but I don't know. The, the Great Room Depot project took probably six months longer than it needed to.
Okay.
So, I would say probably six, eight months.
One of the hardest things, I think, even for Matt, dealing with this whole process, city with any construction project, our timeframe ends up being way extended beyond what the private sector will do. We have to make sure that we use appropriate procedures for bringing on an architect or engineer that meet our requirements. Then we have to make sure that we do all the bidding in a way that meets our requirements as well, for, put on us mainly the state level. Next item in here, sewer separation work. This is gonna fall under Nick. Get a nice cross between Don and Nick in terms of how do we handle the sewer fund. The majority of the sewer fund Don will present that needs to be funded out of the sewer revenues, but Nick's work on this combined sewer separation fits into that same requirement, and then maintaining this sewer distribution system, or-
Collection.
Collection system. Thank you. So, one of the things that's happened with this CSO work, we had a, this next, the Masl phase in what was designed to be back in the early two thousands, we had a cost estimate for Masl to be in the twenty to twenty-five million dollar range. What we got back from a, a preliminary design work, this Locust Basin at five million, that's the smallest of the basins, it's gonna be the first year project within the sewer separation work, and we budgeted out three and a half million a year after that. The cost estimates were in the ninety million dollar range, absent engineering work, which would put that total more in the hundred and ten million dollar range, possibly a tad higher than that. There's a little bit of a difference between the twenty-five, thirty-five million and that hundred and ten million dollar figure. It's gonna be something, even though we have the, we're building in that three and a half million or so a year work within our CIP plan, we are in the process of, we've, we've had some discussions with DNR about getting, getting a willingness from them to delay the next phase that we need to do, which is submittal of a facility plan on the MAS portion of the Masl, Market Angular South portion, until we can do some additional work. We've been working with some contractors from the EPA on an integrated plan, which is designed to take a look at your whole system needs. We brought on an attorney out of Des Moines to work with us even on that part. We want to try to make sure that they incorporate within that integrated plan, looking at our overall, more of our overall community needs. What is it, what is, what does our infrastructure look like? Primarily, what we'll also incorporate will be our street infrastructure and the needs that we have there, what it would take to be on a, a true replacement cycle, and what we can afford to do with- to be on a true replacement cycle, and what we can afford to do with the grant funding that we receive and the geo-bonding that we do to make those projects happen. We want to make sure that we build in, as the EPA looks at that, then in turn, DNR, as they're looking at our CSO work that's being required, making sure that they're putting into context of everything else within our city that needs done. A lot of the stuff that Don needs done down at the plant with the lift stations, along with the CSO work, potential nitrate, phosphate removal, and the studies that are going on there, he's trying to get built into a master plan, which is why we took, committed to spending a significant amount of money on that. We wanted to make sure that that gets incorporated, and all the needs that come out of that process are put in, and we can try to layer and stair-step all those different pieces and go to the DNR with a justification for why we can't afford to meet the schedule that they've done, and potentially change the philosophy that we have about what's going on with elimination of CSOs to having a managed amount of CSOs, to try to help to get the costs into pared back on that work, and then spread out over an extended period of time that takes into account the rest of the work. But that's, as you think about what gets presented within the five-year CIP plan for operations down there, there are a lot of moving pieces for what's going on, and there are a lot more needs than we'll ever be able to get to, which should be a familiar topic with a lot of things that are going on with the city. What we do and have continued to try to work on is having rate increases in a three percent range, and that's, part of this budget is built off of that ongoing three percent annual rate increase continuing, both in the sanitary sewer as well as stormwater utility rates. One thing that's going on, too, we're in the process of revising our rate structures for both of those utilities. The first one that we'll be rolling out will be on the stormwater side, change in the way that we do our rates. Primarily, I don't know if that's going to be a significant change in the way we do our rates, but we certainly will have some entities who see some significant changes to what their bills are, because they aren't, we are not currently billing everybody where we were supposed to be billing them.
Significant increases, is that?
Yes. So as we look at those, we're going to see, what we found in our system is, is that we, our impervious surface area, we have a, within our ordinance structure, a calculation that's supposed to be done. Not everyone's being charged as much as they are supposed to be being charged.
For stormwater?
For stormwater. And part of this rate and rate study will be getting all of those corrected, and our goal is to try to have that done moving into this new year. We have talked with the chamber just to have them start to try to have some discussions, because it's primarily chamber members, it's business and industry that have significant parking space, it's really the primary places where that's a factor. But we're going to, we'll see, as those rate studies are going on, the areas that we've asked, the, I think that's BNK, that's the engineering firm that's doing them, we want to hold our main residential rate consistent. So if we're doing the three percent rate increases, next year's rate on the main residential, we want to see the, that rate be next year, what the current rate is, plus about that three percent increase. It may cause rebalancing in some other categories. So you, we, there's no system that you can have a rate study done that you don't have places that end up with a significant change, either plus or minus. The water system just did their rate study, and they're having the same issues go on, where you have some places that are seeing a major, a major change, and others that aren't. It's the nature of that process. It's not fun. I think that kind of makes it through that section. Major cost drivers. Well, seeing how employee wages and benefits are, especially in the general fund, or in the seventy-five percent range of what our expenditures are, they're the major factors. Overall wages are budgeted increased two point two five percent annually. Health insurance costs increased five percent annually. Pension system is something that had a significant impact on us this year. A year ago, our projections for fiscal nineteen versus where we are now, fiscal nineteen, pensions increased our operating cost by a hundred thousand in the general fund. Ipers had to increase their funding contribution from the eight, eight point nine three percent, where it's been for the last five years, to nine point four four percent. MFP RSI, or Municipal Fire Police Retirement System, four eleven, chapter four eleven of the state code, increased from twenty-five point six eight to twenty-six point oh two. And in the out years, there's a couple of years that they're projecting right now, increases a couple of years down, a couple of years up from that figure. And again, the four eleven system sees the number move up and down much more frequently than what the Ipers does, just the nature of their funding formula. They're just structured differently. Increases in this year, I think for both of them, the four eleven increased because they changed their mortality tables. I think it might have been the same thing on the, or a comparable thing that was done on the Ipers side, that they had a, their investments met their projections, it's just they had, they had other changes that occurred that impacted the system negatively. Property liability insurance increased five percent. Non-union wages to match union contracts at that two point two five percent with a transition table. Those that, for, the transition table allows people below midpoint to get caught up to midpoint. The majority of our employees now are, when we, since we redid all the salaries here a year and a half ago, are below the midpoint.
I thought we had that squared away last year.
Well, what we, we redid our salary, salary matrix for all the positions, and so we had a lot of people who pay ranges changed, or where, what ended up happening is the majority of the positions were below the midpoint. So until you get caught up to the midpoint, you get a larger than that two point two five percent. So you'll see employees anywhere from the two point two five percent increase on a non-union up to four, four percent to get caught up. And if you think of that in context of our, the union positions, on the union side, you would, you have tiers, so that if you have three or five tiers, depending on the union, three, moving from one tier to the next, as you've, with years of service, allow you to have a larger than that two point two five percent to get caught up to the, moving from more of an entry wage level up to the ongoing wage level. So the transition table on the non-union side accomplishes the same thing. Gambling revenues flat, already talked about hotel motel and lost revenues down. Property tax valuations were up three percent from last year, which, that was a boon, that was a benefit. It's higher than what our
That helps.
Our fifteen-year average is one point seven percent. But if you think about the cost impacts that I mentioned up above, if wages go up two point two five percent, health insurance goes up five percent, which compared to other plans, that's a pretty modest amount. But those are above what our primary funding source is. And at long term, that has an Overall proposed budget expenditures in the general fund are only point seven five percent higher than the previous fiscal, or than fiscal year seventeen's. I wonder if that's supposed to be eighteen's budget, and I just missed that. I think it's eighteen. Again, the primary factor pushing up is salary and benefits. It would be more than that point seven five percent, except that we took out a double counting of revenues expenditures in the auditorium. That muted what the increase would have been. We'll see revenue expenditures higher in the fire department with the safer grant, and ambulancy fee revenue going up at a pretty good rate. In terms of rate, other rates, sanitation, or what do you call?
Solid waste.
Solid waste. Twenty-five cents increase from fourteen a month to fourteen and a quarter a month, and we've been budgeting that with a quarter increase each year, and we're looking at that projection-wise over the next five years to have that same deal. This is something that you're going to be hitting on during your presentation, but we looked at, we've continued to talk about the potential to change our system from the tag system that we currently have with the thirty-gallon containers to moving to more of a sixty-five gallon container, that would eliminate the majority of the tag revenue. The, we've got a couple of different goals that have been talked about, and this has been something that, from an operational standpoint of the department, Don's group does a phenomenal job with picking up trash. But the thirty-gallon containers are, those are, that's a tough job manually moving, carrying all of those. And the goal there is trying to, is there a way to move more to a consistent container size, a larger container, but putting an arm on the back of the, of the truck, so you have a semi-automatic and it tips it. That arm tips it, instead of having them to, having to physically lift and dump each of the containers. Now, there, it's not as if they're going to get away from the physical nature of it, but it's designed to try to reduce the physical nature of it, and try to reduce the number of injuries that these guys go through, because they, they get a lot of significant wear and tear on them.
I can't remember a time that I've been on the council that we haven't had somebody busted up. So, and I'm serious, I just wonder how much money that we've spent.
Not only that, but I can tell you firsthand, the insurance premiums for automated trash collection systems are significantly cheaper than for non-automated.
Although with our system, it doesn't quite, now, for, so for how our work comp works, we have a high deductible work comp, so any major claims, we have a stop loss, but we self-fund our work comp otherwise. Our overall cost for work comp, three hundred and fifty thousand, if we were to look at a work comp policy for our employee size and payroll, what I see from comparable communities is twice that, what they're spending on work comp. So we do, we, it doesn't have the same impact on rates, because we don't go out and shop at the same, but the rates are very telling in regards to the number of injuries, and the hope there to try to help save our forces' bodies.
Yeah.
On a side note, I'm concerned what would happen with recycling if we went to those larger containers.
That's, that's, and that's one of the concerns that Don has continued to raise as any of these discussions go out. You have, you, you're going, you're not going to see the same level of recycling. We're fairly sure of that. You'll still, you'll still see recycling, but it won't be the same.
I think what we need to focus on is actually penalizing more waste while not rewarding, but making recycling less of, not less of a hassle, but, you know, you have to pay for your recycling container. Granted, you only have to pay for one, and then you can put out your own little
If somebody steals it.
Yeah, or that. But I feel like this is just going to encourage more waste. And what is going to cost less in the long run is, is recycling. One, because you can sell recyclables. And two, then that in itself is another, there's less for those people that have to deal with lifting the trash. And I think we could probably find ways to increase what it costs people to throw things away.
So, with the other thing, side of that, though, is by going to a larger container, we would probably see less trash-related nuisance claims.
This is the other part of what we've talked about long-term, and Charlie has probably been the lead on this discussion. Because our nuisance department deals so much with loose trash, not just loose trash, but going to a place and finding a garage full of garbage. Now, you're not going to eliminate that, but you will limit the amount of that. Part of the, what happens with trash being collected is the base garbage left out and anything over and above collects at different places. That's one issue. The other is just the nature of the thirty-gallon containers and then extra bags that are left out, and just wind coming up or dogs tearing it up creates an issue. And having a sixty-gallon container, part of the goal there is to try to have less of those nuisance issues occur from those other factors.
Would that be the limit? Would they only be allowed one sixty-gallon container? Because I mean, I'm
That's a discussion that we have to have. Now, another community I was in, we used ninety-gallon containers.
And that's what I've been more exposed to.
And, I'd say that we were able somehow in that town, make it with one ninety-gallon container. We had, we had people that
I wonder what he was doing to make that happen.
Recycling. We had other, well, our kids were younger. We had other, I think that, we did a base charge on that, we did another, like, three bucks for a second, and another dollar fifty for a third, dollar fifty for a fourth, and we had like one person, had four ninety-gallon containers in town. That would be closer to what we are now.
And then is that billed on, I mean, we add that charge to their water bill, so that's something that'd be added in that revenue source.
You'd have to figure out how you're doing that. That would, I think, be part of a discussion, about if you were to implement that system, how do you go about it. We, in our system, you would sign up for a subscription. So if you're saying, I want one, you're going to, you're going to have your one, you're going to have the base price. If you want a second one out there so that you can have the flexibility, you're going to pay the monthly ongoing cost for that.
So just like, so I have a Levine's trash, or a, every bin I have is X number of dollars, and then
Correct.
And just to tackle your recycling, I actually used to live in a community that had a ninety-gallon bin for trash, and then they had a sixty-gallon bin for recycling. And if they came to remove your trash and there were recyclables in there, they wouldn't take it. So you had no choice. They want to pull your trash, and there's milk jugs in there, or boxes, or things like that, they won't take the trash, thus pushing it back another week. And they'll tag it and say that your bin contains recyclable, recyclables, and we won't pick it up until it's removed. Now, that's kind of going above and beyond. I also lived in another community where if you did it, they would fine you. I don't know if that's the direction we want to go, but there are, there are
I think there are definitely steps we need to take, and as soon as possible.
There are things that we could do that would encourage more recycling, and also provide a better service and help limit our exposure to the work comp claims that we've experienced from a trash, from a trash collection standpoint, solid waste collection standpoint.
So, as this discussion goes on, that will, that's a precursor to what fun we will have when Don presents the base budget.
Well, that sounds
The base budget that will be presented there by Don will be based off of the idea of continuing our existing system. It does add one full-time position within that to try to help address the issues that we have with understaffing. That would limit, to some extent, the amount of outside labor that we contract through temp labor, but it wouldn't alleviate it completely. It would limit it some, but not completely eliminate it. We can work that in within the rate structure that we've been operating under over the last few years and are looking to work under over the next few. Don will also look at what a budget would look like to implement the sixty-five gallon containers, and it does change the structure. And that is a point where that's designed to be, you don't necessarily have to have that occur during this budget cycle. And you certainly don't want to hold up approving a budget based off of that, but it, you may, this, there's a lot of conversation that wants to go on with this group on this, and it may spur some thoughts about what are some different avenues that we need to explore as we move forward on that.
Good.
Already mentioned sewer rates. Again, that's three percent annual increases. One thing within the hotel One thing within the hotel motel, we did have a, we've traditionally funded over, well, long-term, since I've been here, we funded the Art Guild and the Symphony. We brought on Burlington Municipal Band sporadically and then more of, on a permanent basis for funding out of that at the levels mentioned in there. We had a request from the Capitol Theater for twenty thousand out of that same fund, and they were looking at that as something, I think, as an ongoing thing. I don't have the funding to make the things happen that need to happen, that we're already committed to. I, I just, I can't recommend covering that request, it's not built in here.
You're talking about Capitol Theater? Or are you talking about all of them?
Just the, yeah.
He's talking about just the Capitol.
Yeah, twenty thousand percent. I, I can't find a way to, I mean, in a different scenario, two years ago, that request would have been easier to at least look at, the level of funding that was being requested. I'm, I don't know that I'd recommended it in comparison with what other groups were getting, but this is just not the context for bringing on additional funding commitments.
True.
Police Department, just as last year, as Chief presented a scenario for what you could look for transitioning staffing levels there, there was some thought from, the discussion came from the council about wanting to look at bringing on six additional folks. Chief did not want to bring on six additional folks, even if that was something that you would have actually looked to find the prioritization for funding to make it happen at that point. Just from terms of bringing people on and being able to adequately train them along with our, the kind of turnover, you probably have about two people a year anyway that are retiring or moving to another department or whatever goes on that need, need to bring on. He looked at a plan, if you're going to make that increase in staffing of six folks occur, two per year was more than needed to be done, and he can address that topic during his budget presentation. The budget is not based on adding anyone, but that discussion about whether you want to continue that plan that was brought forward last year and bring on the next two in that cycle, and the associated equipment can be brought up. Again, I think I wrote a little bit about it in notes, but something that Chief has brought up, you start bringing on additional folks and having a, if you do continue to add more people onto the street, it impacts everything that's associated with it, calls for service, that, the calls that are getting answered, the reports that are generated from that, change what it takes to keep up with the processing, everything that's involved with that. And so, you, you have some byproduct, potentially, staffing needs if you continue to go down that road, and...
Jimmy, I've got to back up to, because this is new to me, back to Foray and the Art Guild for twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars annually. I don't remember giving the Art Guild any money annually.
They're listed, they've been identified, and you're, see, one thing that will get presented later on in the process, you'll see a list of everything that's funded for out of Hotel Motel tax. They've been listed every year for the last five years. It's something, and I don't know how long that's been going on, that they've been funded out of there, but it's something that's been funded for, since well before I was here.
Before we say absolutely no to the twenty thousand for the Capitol Theater, and I agree with you that now is not the time for necessarily new requests for funding, but do we look at the, the benefit that that brings to the community from either an economic standpoint or from a revenue standpoint? Any large projects or any large fairs or events that are bringing in revenue that we need to take into consideration before we absolutely say no to that type of pro, or type of request?
You, if you want to do something that's different, you certainly can. I, I just, we don't have enough funding to cover the other stuff that's going on. I just couldn't be adding something new, so...
Well, I just want to say moving forward that I, I think we need to look at the twelve thousand two hundred and fifty that's going to the Art Guild. I'd like to get some information on that, because I certainly don't remember...
If you would like them to make a presentation, I don't know if you have, who you communicate with Stephanie from there, we could have them make the presentation as to what they do with that during this process at a work session.
I think that would be appropriate.
And, kind of already mentioned rec, that's something that the operations there and usage has changed over the last few years. Eric will make sure to touch on that and what's going on out there, and some things that they're looking at to try to address, address it, and still, I mean, it's still an operation, it's phenomenal use, it's just not the same thing that it was ten years ago. And what we, again, we changed what we funded in there from the forty thousand level to the seventy-five thousand in this year's budget to filling in at the hundred and ten, growing to a hundred and forty over the next five years, and it may not take that, but it's fundamentally different than what it has been in the past for what we need to, to put in to make that operate. I've talked about as much as I should talk for tonight.
I thought you went above and beyond, Jim, but...
Thanks. I do want to put up one thing. You'll address what's in the booklet, which is good. Eric, the last page of your, what I gave to you. Yeah, I think so, it has the bottom of that. I have to look at the top to see what it's doing there with the headings. So, we don't do five-year budgets here, we do one-year budget, but as, as I put it together, we do the, CIP plan is based on a five-year basis for primarily what happens with local options, sales tax, hotel motel tax, road use tax, and what's sewer needs to make sure it is looking at its revenue on a five-year basis, but we do it with the general fund too, looking at our existing operations, the staffing levels that we have in the different departments, the revenues that we are bringing in, what we're looking at for changes in cost factors. We assume a, right at that two percent CPI factor for most categories, we build in the wage increases, we build in benefit increases, we look at what's going on with our different revenue sources, gambling state, the gambling revenue, for example, stays very flat. We build in about a one-point-eight percent annual increase on property tax revenue, which is the fifteen-year trend, and we look at what's going to happen long-term. So, now, look...
We don't have that page.
No, you don't. That's why I wanted to show you this. What I do is plug in the revenues and expenditures. If you look at our, it shows here the beginning fund balance going into next year at about two-point-eight million level. The budget for next year, we've got budgeted to gain right at fifty thousand. Keeps us at about the same fund, fund balance percentage, right at that fourteen-point-seven percent. We enter the year and end the year at fourteen-point-seven percent. But out years, we go from a, that fifty thousand positive budget to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand deficit, to a million-dollar deficit over five years.
Is that a result of a great sewer situation?
So, this is just the general fund, so the main factors that hit that, we have SAFER funding for six positions. That SAFER funding goes away. We have funding in the police department for two positions, that funding goes away. Then you factor in a long-term process where your revenues historically haven't grown at the same level as expenditures. That exacerbates it. Just the positions, just the positions would have, and the grant funding to go along with it is, I guess I didn't do that, but off the cuff is in the half-a-million-dollar range, going from having the positions as currently funded to no grant funding for them. The, the rest is just a growing spread between revenues and expenditures. Where we're at right now, we can address and handle, but we hit, we, we are going to hit a spot where we have to deal with, what are we going to do different? Whether that's collect more revenues, whether that's change our, our personnel structure or what, or something that's happened over the next couple of years. Again, that's not what is on the line for this year, but as you make decisions, you got to think about what the long-term impacts are. The fun, the positions that we brought on, just maintaining them has a long-term impact that will happen. Two hours here, an hour of me talking is all the more than anyone can stand. Did you want to kind of talk about what you've put into the binders and...
So, everybody had binders, so each week, at the end of the day, we have the detail of the police budget, and then you'll have the detail of the five-year CIP. So, you'll have handouts at your station each, each time we meet, and you can add to your budget binder, so I'm just saying, maybe, you know, bring it each week and put it in. The first page, of course, is just the calendar of all the meetings we have scheduled, Jim's report, and then we ended up putting a file, a special report for the budget, it gives a good overview of different aspects of the budget. That's some reading. And then just, we have, the next one is the comparables of our rate, property tax rate to other cities, that's in there, we wanted to share that with you, and if you have any questions. And we show the gross revenues of the general fund, gross expenditures, and then the last schedule is showing net of by department, and that combines the revenues that we get in for that department against the expenditures to show the two, true cost of that function. So, if anybody has any questions on these, Jim, your point seven-five was compared to the twenty eighteen, so, that's where that, you can see that. And we also broke down the percentage, you know, of the general fund that makes up each of the different functions, fire, police, culture and rec, those are... Does anybody have any questions? I know in the packet we also included, I shouldn't get over that, didn't I? Where we did some definitions.
The fund structure overview and basics of accounting and budgeting, a lot of this is put on us. I mean, you have, GFPA, Government Finance Officers Association puts a lot of structure on it, but the state of Iowa follows the same type of structure. It requires us to break our revenues and expenditures down into different categories. Do encourage you to make sure you have at least a general understanding of what, we talk about buckets, money comes into one bucket, and you have to account for it in that bucket, and you may use it to help fund something else, now you're doing transfers between buckets, and states really have this, it's a difficult track of things, and it's confusing. It's bad enough that you're dealing with a seventy-five-million-dollar budget, we make it a lot more complicated and hard to track.
But if any has, anybody has any questions, feel free to contact me. If there's anything else you want to see in here, let us know, but it will fill up as we go through these next weeks. You'll, you'll see the detail of the police budget, have the ability to present them. And, any questions?
And you see the, you know, some of the other stuff that's in there, you do have material that was in the council packet that encouraged people to look at. It's a gen, you see that what we're presenting for general overall expenditures within the general fund and revenues in the general fund. There's also sheeting there compared to other towns over twenty thousand population to give you an idea of where our tax levy sits. Keep in, keep that in perspective, we are a high-tax levying community. As you make decisions, remember the impact it has on that. That is one of the key drivers that looks, that economic, from an economic perspective, people look where they're going to live, where they're going to work, those are factors that, that have a, a big impact on it, along with, though, at the same time, quality of life. So, how do you make sure that you keep them in balance as we're making these decisions?
What's best for Arlington, do you know?
A lot lower. If you want to look, in fact, anybody that wants to look at a community, Department of Management's website has, you can go into their local government section, and you can look up any community's budgeted information. You can look at it over...
Still always apples and apples, though.
Absolutely.
Well, but it does give you an idea, and that's where all the information, looking at the Department of Management's website and taking a look at those, those comparisons.
I know, but I'm just saying, in some communities, they, they do their financials different and all of that too, so...
Radio, Wednesday.
I can do it.
Nine o'clock.
All right.
And see you then on Thursday at three-thirty.
All right. You guys, any closing remarks, Mr. Tesla?
Nope.
Peanut butter popcorn.
Consider signing up for the Citizens Academy if you haven't, that's Thursday evenings. I can't tell you exactly when it starts, five-thirty to seven-thirty, and I'm thinking about signing up, because I think it's a tremendous way to learn about how your city operates.
All right, you heard it first. Johnny Bulks.
First of all, thank you, Jim, for breaking down some of the technical difficulties that we have, I appreciate it, as there's three, three people there of us that are new, and also the public at home, it's kind of nice to have those broke out. So, the other thing is, great job of the city staff, once again, the ice storm, I got around town just fine, couldn't call in sick, so thanks a lot for that. And that's it.
I couldn't call in sick either, so thanks for that.
Yeah, the roads were, the roads were great in Burlington, I had trouble navigating other cities' streets, which was surprising considering the proximity. Also, this Friday is Battle of the Brushes, which is one of my newest, most favorite events at the art center. So, I'm excited to see what happens this year, it's Friday. I'm not sure if there's still tickets available, I guess you'll have to go down and see, but I know it sells out pretty quick and get turn people away, so get down there and check it out, it's only ten bucks. They also have an art hop for kids, and there is an art campaign for Fridays and so, it's fun.
All right.
That's all I have.
Your fifty kids can have something to do that day, Jim. Mr. Rinker.
I don't have much. Chief Barrett, obviously you've announced your retirement, I'm assuming, so just thank you very much for your, all your hard work, and just echo what Tanner said earlier, with you and shop with a cop, and I know what the effect you've had on the community will be felt for years to come, and Tanner just really missed the Hawkeye great article regarding the fire that occurred in Burlington years and years ago, I found it very entertaining, so that was it.
Yeah, I just wanted to officially say that, that Friday, the first week of April, it's been wonderful, I mean, it's thirty years, it's a long time, but when I talked to Jim and he offered me the job as chief in 2012, you know, I kind of said then it'd be five and a half years, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot for your family, you know, it's just time, it's just time to take a break from law enforcement and go do some work. And I'll have some more things to say to, obviously, my proclamation for retirement, but I just want to say thanks. You know, I look back to 2012 and where we were with thirty-eight officers and the fertilizer plant, and I mean, it was, was a real struggle for the organization, and we made a commitment to change our culture and how, how we go about policing in this community, and, you know, we have probably more. I wish it wasn't that way, but it is, but we do it with dignity and respect, and that's something that we're really proud of, so. With that said, it'll be the first week of April, I mean, you guys got a lot of decisions to make between now and then, but you got, got some months here to get that done, and I'm here to help you through that process. if that's what you choose. Potentially complete by then. I mean, there's going to be some trim work. There'll be some things going on down there. I mean, the schedule's probably now the first week of May or so before we can start actually moving in there. But by the time the first week of April is around, it'll be in a position that we'll know exactly where we're at with the building and the budget. And it's something that I promised the community. It'll get done within budget. I'll make you that promise. I said that years ago, so we'll stick with that. So, thanks for everybody. We'll have a little bit more to talk about. Like I said, as time moves on here and as the process gets started, I know Mr. Fernando will have a process. I don't know if that's after I leave or... But I'm here to help you with that. I've made a lot of contacts with the industry. Got some great people to bring down here to help you assess candidates or whatever you want to do with that. That'll be entirely up to you. So, like I said, I'm just grateful. I'm grateful. I'm very fortunate. I'm blessed to have a community like Burlington, that's for sure.
We're grateful for you, that's for sure. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It's not some part of an elaborate April Fool's.
Talking down there, but he wasn't having any, so, yeah.
One last thing. Citizens, yes, we hear you. If you're listening, we'll check in to see why MediaCom's not broadcasting the meetings.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. Nothing else? We're good to go? James? Wrap this up, and we'll see you guys in a couple of days. Thank you.